Screen yes button and confirming with the blue button. All members are present. At this time, I'd ask that Mr. Kenneth Peterson from District 1, please leave your seat and come to the front. Mr. Paul J. Mazzara, District 3. Mr. Gary Anderson, District 5. Mr. Robert Hullett, District 7. Mr. Rick Wimberly, District 9. And Mr. Mark Gregory, District 11. If you'll please come to the front. First, congratulations on your election. We have the Honorable Mayor Rogers Anderson. I'd ask that he come forward to the microphone, and he will be conducting the swearing-in ceremony.
If you would, raise your right hand, and I will let you fill in where it's blank. Ready? And congratulations to all of you. You know, as another, if you don't mind, Dr. Looney, could we have their family members come up with them, stand with us? Would you object to that?
Most of the office is just people.
Well, that's what made me think of it. And I know Gary Anderson, he might have all family members.
Our student enrollment is in good shape.
It just depends on who has to help pay for it. Let's raise our right hand. And if you would, repeat after me. And again, welcome aboard. Aye. And say your name, please. Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Tennessee, the Tennessee Constitution, Article X, Section 1, and swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Board of Education for which I'm about to assume. Congratulations, each and every one of you. I need for you to sign that. Do schools have any money left? Maybe they've got some ink pen, they can pass it out to you. Would sign that and return that paper. Here's some ink pen. You got one?
And I want to get some group photos of everybody, if y'all, and once you're done signing that.
Sure, you can have it right back.
You can do it, thanks.
Congratulations, Board members. Welcome. We have a lot of important work to do together. Look forward to working with you. At this time, I'd ask for Mrs. Pat Anderson to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll stand just for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. It is that time of year to elect a school board chairperson and a school board vice chair. I'd like to open the floor to nominations for school board chair and vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Pat Anderson for chair.
There is a nomination for Mrs. Anderson to be the chairwoman
with a second.
With a second. Any nominations for vice chair?
I would like to nominate Gary Anderson.
There's a second? All those in favor, say aye. Mr. Golden informs me I should have said, are there any additional nominations? There being none, I accept that's a legal vote. So, Mrs. Anderson, congratulations. You better get back over here and take care of this microphone, because I don't know how to operate it.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very honored to have the opportunity to serve on this board, but I'm very humbled and honored by the opportunity to serve as your chair. And I hope the community understands and realizes what an incredible group of people this is, sitting around this table this evening. And like I said, it is truly an honor to have the opportunity to work with each of you. Mr. Anderson, would you like to say something?
Thank you. I too appreciate the honor to be here. This, I'm starting my 23rd year on this school board, and I've always enjoyed the time here and being able to represent the school system and being able to represent all the families that live here. And I moved here 30 years ago to be in this school system, and I still think it's worthy of moving to today and want to continue along those lines. So, thank you very much for your confidence.
Thank you. We will move on to the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, before you proceed, I'd ask that the board consider deleting Item 4E from the agenda. That is, the five-year capital outlay plan. Based on my conversations with you individually over the course of the last few days since our work session, I believe that there's some more work to be done with us collectively, and would ask that Mrs. Anderson make contact with the board members to consider a special called work session to deal with this matter.
Are there any objections from us removing Item 4E from the agenda this evening? There are no other corrections or additions. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion from Mr. Welch. Second from his vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. As part of that approval process, we approved on the consent agenda the board minutes from the July 16, 2012 meeting. We approved board policy revisions on second reading 1.100, school board legal status and authority, 6.3061, student conduct and discipline, 6.3131, student aggressive behavior management. We approved the field trip fee request, the extended contract proposal, the calendar committee membership, and the replacement of the Brentwood High School sign. Next item on the agenda is public comment. We have one individual who has signed up to address the board during public comment. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium and give us your name and address. And Mr. Anderson, who sits to my right, has some timer and some cue cards to keep you on task. And the beeper will sound at a minute and a half. First individual is Mr. Eric Stuckey.
Good evening. Of course, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and also thank you for your fine service to the community. Truly, the public is served well by the professional staff and educators here in Williamson County, and it's a great part. It's central to our quality of life here. You know, we work best when we work together, and that's been the spirit of this inter-local agreement that is, we talked about recently, and I want to reflect on that a little bit with you. Back in 2010, when this was brought together, that was the spirit, to deliver a school, starting in the fall of 2010, and have it open by August of 2011. We worked to do that. The Board of Mayor and Alderman, from the first hearing at the planning commission to their final approval, did that in about six weeks, a process that normally takes six months. Within that, there was some concern in the public, and that centered around traffic issues. We had intersections nearby that were rated as an F, not just by city staff, but also by your own traffic engineering study. So, we took action together to address it and have been working to do that. In 2011, when traffic signals could not be delivered in time, we worked together for a solution there where police officers were in place at peak times to make sure safety and traffic flowed effectively. And here we are, 2012, looking at this issue again, and some potential challenges facing the city and meeting some obligations related to the agreement. Where I'd like to go at this point and follow up from our meeting is I would like to request that you not vote on this item tonight. We would like to keep working through this issue. Could I have some permission to finish my
Yes, sir.
statement, please? Thank you. What I'd like to do is have you hold off on voting on it tonight. What the city will proceed with doing is bidding two projects that we think fit the definition in the agreement, that both have promised to address traffic issues in the area, and are parts of the McEwen Extension Project, McEwen 4, that we referred to, are elements that were pulled out of that project and would like to work to have at least one, if not both, of those awarded by October. From there, we hope that that will then comply with the agreement, and we don't need to revisit it. There's still uncertainty. We don't know how that process will come out. I may see you in October. I hope I don't. Don't take that personally. Folks do a great job. But I hope that things go smoothly and we don't have to revisit it. But if we do, I promise, and I know that the commitment on your staff is the same, that we will have worked for a viable solution that serves all parties well. But I thank you for your time and your service. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Things across the district are going exceedingly well. You received a strategic plan update at the board work session. We've had a very smooth opening of school thanks to the hard work of our administrators and teachers across the district. I am told that this has been one of the smoothest openings that we've had in recent history. I'm very pleased with everybody's work, and we're off to a really good start. We do have some individuals that we want to recognize, and with your permission, I'd like to lead the first recognition as part of my report. I'd like for Marsha Johnson to please come forward. Mrs. Johnson happens to be the culinary arts teacher at Summit High School. And for those of you that had the pleasure of attending the second annual Superintendent's Award banquet at De Factory, Mrs. Johnson's culinary arts students provided the meal service. And I was bragging to the mayor of Franklin just a few moments ago about the quality of that meal. It was absolutely remarkable. And because they did such a fine job and because culinary arts is one of those areas where they're always trying to buy food and get their needs met, and they have a very able and capable teacher, I'd like for the board president and I to join in presenting a small token of appreciation for your hard work and service, but to also give you some resources to keep cooking. And so, Mrs. Anderson, you can help me unroll that. We're going to present you with a $1,000 check from Intel. Congratulations, and thank you for your hard work.
Dr. Looney, I just want to thank you and thank all of you. We've had a wonderful beginning to our year, and it started off with such a bang, with doing this superintendent's dinner. We want to thank you for inviting us, for including us in this event, and we hope to make it an annual event that we can participate in. So, thank you so much.
We're going to take a photo off.
Here, I'll use your camera. Yeah, y'all are going to have to squeeze in nice and tight. Okay, on three. Right here, one, two, three. We have another camera over here. Hold on one second. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thanks, y'all, very much. And if I could ask Mr. Mason to come back to the podium. We have one additional spotlight that we'd like to make everybody aware of.
Yes, good evening. It is my pleasure to present to you the Student Spotlight Award winners for the month of September. We have one. Her name is Fay Collins, and she's a sixth grader at Page Middle School. And Fay is one of only 12 students in the entire nation to be chosen as a kids' news reporter for Time for Kids magazine for the 2012-13 school year. She's the only winner from the state of Tennessee, so it's a very big deal. And with this honor, Collins will be covering local news that is of national interest to the publication's 3 million kids subscribers. Her articles, including one that she just wrote about the Gublitzville Little League team, will appear in both the weekly print publication of Time for Kids and online at timeforkids.com. So, congratulations to Fay Collins.
Madam Chair, that completes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. And thank you, Mr. Mason. I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is a board chairman's report. I'd like to recognize the fact that we have the mayor of Franklin, Mr. Ken Moore, in the audience with us tonight. We appreciate your presence, as always. I'd like to thank the bands in this county. If you had an opportunity to visit the band exhibition on Saturday evening, it was an outstanding performance by all of our high school bands. And then there was a collective performance at the end that included our middle school bands, and it was really quite a thing to see and see how well all of our students perform at the band competition. I'd like to thank Mayor Anderson for being here tonight and taking time out of his schedule to swear on our new board members. Congratulate our three new board members. We're looking forward to working with you as you join our team. And to our three returning board members, we're excited that all of you were able to return and join us here at the board. Last month, I don't think I mentioned the fact about how proud we are as a district of our schools because we are the top-performing school in TCAP testing. And I think it's just worthy to say one more time thank you to all of our teachers, administrators, and students for such an outstanding year last year. And as Dr. Looney told the governor, this is just the warm-up. So, we have high hopes for the year to come. We did have non-reward schools, and we had a very large celebration at Kenrose several weeks ago, which included the governor as well as the Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan, and who came in with Skype and recognized our reward schools. We have a college fair on September 26 at the School Springs Galleria, so if you're available, it's always a great time to visit that and see the colleges that are interested in our students, and also just a good chance to build relationships with people in the community. Week before last, on Friday, we had a new thing in Williamson County. It was called First Camp. And we had 160 area high school students from Williamson County that attended that. And Rhonda Booker and her staff were responsible for making those arrangements. And we had four speakers that presented to the students. It was quite an impressive day. I think the students enjoyed it. But I also think that those individuals that were there as presenters and as sponsors of that event equally enjoyed it. Deloitte, Sherian, Qualifax, and The Score were part of the presenters at that day. But we also had some very impressive sponsors that included Microsoft, Cyber, Hellspring, Lipscomb University, Hewlett-Packard, Intel, and NIC. Did I leave anyone out, Ms. Booker? But it was a very good day for all. So, that was a nice event to attend as well. As Dr. Looney said, we'll be looking to contact you to see when is the best time for us to gather again to discuss our five-year capital plan. So, be looking for some communication about that in the next day or two. I will communicate, as I normally do, about that. That concludes my report. Except, we have some principals and staff in the audience. I'd like to recognize them. If you would stand and let us welcome you. Thank you very much for being here. It's always a pleasure to have you attend and show your support for the board and our responsibilities. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 4A, New Business Board Policy Revisions for First Reading. First one is A1 1.107, School Board Norms. This is located on page 33. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair, I do recommend approval of this first reading.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Mills?
Second.
Second from Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? I see none. Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A2 1.800, School Calendar. This is located on page 35. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. I do recommend approval of this proposed revision to 1.800, School Calendar.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Hullett? Second from Ms. Mills? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Try pressing one more time. Thank you.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A3 4.208, Adult Education Program. This information is on page 37. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. 4.208, this is the first reading. I do recommend the changes submitted by staff.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Welch? Second from his vote? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 4B, Code of Ethics. This information is located on page 39. Dr. Looney?
I guess it's unusual that I'm recommending this, but I do recommend the board adopt these, the Code of Ethics, for board members.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Ms. Mills? And second from Mr. Gregory? Is there any discussion? Or ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. If everyone will indulge me for just a moment, I do think that it's important because this is a newly revised document for this body. And we've worked, as many of you know, for many months on the language and the changes, proposed changes that we just approved. We normally do this activity in October, but our actions tonight eliminate the need for that duplication again next month. But I do think it's important for us to read this aloud so that the members of the community can understand the work that we have accomplished over the past several months. So, if each board member would take, we'll start with Mr. Peterson. If you will take the first two, and there's enough for two sections as we go around the table. And if, just I guess to make sure that our microphones, I'll recognize you before I call on you. So, we'll start with Mr. Peterson. If you will read the first two sections of Article 1, My Relations to Our Students.
I will at all times think in terms of students first, always determining other important things according to how they affect the education and development of students. Section 2, I will seek to provide equal opportunities for all students in academics, the arts, and athletics.
Ms. Mills? If you'll read the first two sections of Article 2, My Relations to or with our community?
Section 1, I will fairly appraise and support both present and future educational needs. Section 2, I will represent at all times the entire school community and refuse to represent special interests or partisan politics.
Mr. Mazzara? If you would read Section 3 and Section 1 of Article 3. And I do want to point out that there is a clean copy at your place instead of the blue line that's inside of our book. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Section 3, I will maintain open lines of communication with the community. Article 1...
Article Three, Section One, I will support the employment of those persons best qualified to, in our district.
To teach. We have discovered a typo. To serve in our district.
To serve.
To serve in our district.
I will support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve in our district.
Okay, Section Two and Section Three. Mr. McLaughlin?
Section two, I will strive to secure resources that will allow our employees to perform with excellence. Section three, I will celebrate employee accomplishments and refrain from public critique.
Mr. Anderson, if you'll read Section One and Section Two of Article Four, My Relations With Other Board Members.
Section one is I will recognize that authority rests only with the board in official meetings and that the individual member has no legal status outside of such meetings. Section two, I will at all times comply with the Tennessee Open Meetings Act, the Sunshine Law.
Mr. Leav, Section Three and Section Four?
Section three, I will make final decisions only after full discussion of matters at a board meeting. Section four, I will respect the opinion of other members and will accept the principle of majority rule.
Mr. Hudlett, Section Five and Six?
Section five, I will attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at those meetings. Section six, I will work with other board members to establish effective board policies and to delegate authority for the administration of our schools to the superintendent.
Mr. Wimberly, if you'll read Article Five, My Relations With Our Superintendent, Section One and Two?
Section one, I will support full administrative authority as well as responsibility for the superintendent to properly discharge all professional duties. Section two, I will support superintendent accountability for working and requiring staff to work within the framework of policies set by the board.
Mr. Welch, if you'll read Section Three and Section One of Article Six, My Relations To Myself?
Section three, I will refer all complaints and concerns to the superintendent. Article Four, My Relations To Myself, Section One, I will inform myself about my duties and responsibilities in current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs providing needed information.
Mr. Gregory, if you will read Section Two and Section Three?
Section two, I will avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest. Section three, I will refrain from using my position on the board for personal or partisan gain.
And Ms. Vogt, if you'll read Section Four and Five?
Section four, I will take no private action that will compromise the board, the district, or administration. Section five, I will respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law.
Move on to next item of business, which is 4C. These are the 2012-13 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments and Intra-C category Transfers. They begin on page 41. Number one is located on page 43. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. As you are aware, the state increased the education salaries for our professional staff members. That information was given to us after the budgeting process and therefore we are asking your permission to move 2.6 or $2,690,690 in the General Purpose School Fund to adjust for these salary increases. I do recommend your approval.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Wimberly.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hullett.
Just a point of clarification, has this been corrected as well as the next one with respect to the date? The version that's on the computer in front of us shows September rather than October. Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4C2, Adult E L Civics. This is located on page 45. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. We were fortunate to receive a $25,000 grant for the purpose of operating our adult education program. These monies will be used to pay hourly wages to teachers to provide services directly to adult education students. I do recommend your approval.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. McLaughlin.
Second.
Second from Mr. Peterson. And Ms. Holman, you did indicate that the date reflected on this is October 8, 2012 rather than September 10, 2012. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4C3, Funding Land Acquisition in the Nolansville area. This is located on page 47. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. I'd like to remind you that we are in the process of closing on property, approximately 100 acres in the northeastern section of the county at the intersection essentially of Nolansville Road and Williams Road. We received approval and funding approval from the county commission for approximately 75 of those acres with the understanding that we would need to spend a million dollars locally to buy the other 25 acres. And speaking with legal counsel and studying the surveys and getting feedback from various stakeholders, it seems appropriate for us to go ahead and close on all that property at one time. We would save legal expenses, surveying expenses, and closing expenses. So Mrs. Holman has identified $422,572.08 in capital unencumbered funds and the balance of $577,427.09 would come from the general purpose school fund balance. I do recommend your approval of this resolution.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Second from Mr. Leav. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4D, City of Franklin Request For Amendment To Interlocal Agreement For The Breezeway Area Infrastructure Improvements. This information begins on page 49. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair and Board members, first of all, I'd like to thank the city for their attendance tonight. We have a very good working relationship with the city. It's, I think, has come a long way in the last couple of years and we appreciate them working with us through this challenge that they're facing at the moment. I do not recommend action and as you heard tonight, Mr. Stuckey is in agreement with my recommendation that they be allowed some additional time to finish their process and to have conversations between the two administrations before any action might be required by the board. I would add that I look forward to our continued cooperative working relationship and I think there are good days ahead for both entities. I am not recommending you any action on behalf of this issue tonight.
Is there anyone who wants to make a motion or speak about this? No, sir. No, sir. Absence of a motion keeps it as it is at the moment. Okay, I see none. That concludes the business on this evening's agenda. Are there any other announcements before we adjourn? Mr. Leav?
Thank you. I had a chance to, to speak, as we all did, as we gathered Thursday night, and to speak somewhat passionately about how excited I am about our track record and our history of having worked together and how, you know, looking out for the best interests of the kids in the county overall. I'm so proud of this board and everybody I've had a chance to work with. It has meant the world to me. My emotions were on my sleeve that night and they are tonight as well. I've been offered a position to work in Colorado and I anticipate that October will most likely be my final board meeting. I'm so grateful to all of you and your care and your concern for our children. It has been, these last six years, amazing and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements before we adjourn?
I'm accepting donations to keep you.
I second that. All in favor. Also, before we adjourn, I need to thank Officer Nikki Osborne for being here this evening. I'm sorry that I forgot to recognize you earlier, but we do appreciate your presence and providing our security tonight. So thank you for being here and thank you to everyone for being here tonight. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, what a far up.
Well played, Mr. Wimberly.